President and Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, Kathy, I can't, I couldn't even hear you down here, so could you please speak louder?
Speaker on, okay, sorry, I'm not speaking, I'm not, sorry, yep, here it is.
Maybe you should sit in the center.
No, I think it was just talking into the microphone, yeah, okay, so, okay, so we have up next is approval of minutes June 3. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I have option paper.
Okay.
Second by.
Is there a second? Okay, excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, Councilman?
Yes, yes, Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. So, these are the April 1st school committee meetings that we're approving, right?
This is the minutes of June 3.
Oh, okay, never mind, motion to approve is fine.
Yep, did you get that? Yeah, and you pack it. All right, and so up next is approval of bills, transfer of funds, approval of payrolls.
Have a question?
Is there a second? A question? Okay, Mr. Benedetto?
Thank you, as usual. So, on page 2 of 15. 107, about almost halfway down, Erzner, first name Eric, $107.82, it says pending classification.
So that is a special fund program, so there is not a classification for that particular fund, but it is for school-wide expenditures. I can get you what specifically was reimbursed for that particular item.
Okay. And my next question.
That was actually, I'm sorry, that was for Eric, that was reimbursement for the ethics bowl that he had chaperoned.
Okay.
On a particular funding.
Yeah, we just don't usually see that pending classification notice. Okay, so the next one is on page 8 of 15. And it might be the second grouping of second packet. It says legal services for $3,000, more than halfway down. Judith Impatore?
Yes, that's under the IDEA grant.
And it... We couldn't use in-house legal services?
It's specific for special education.
Okay. And... That is all I have.
Wonderful.
Okay, great. Paul, in who's second?
No one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Benedetto, okay, great, and we do the roll call vote. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Member Creutz?
Yes.
Member Stone, yes, member Giraud?
Yes.
Member Rousseau?
Yes.
Member Van de Cluut?
Yes.
Mayor Burke absent.
All right, next up is report of secretaries.
Having none.
And I do have a, oh, okay, you don't have, no, okay, that's committee's next, sorry, sorry. Okay, so we're going to move on to report of committees. So, we had a committee of the whole, and we just evaluated the superintendent.
Then the mayor's going to do it when she comes back.
Okay, that's right, okay, great, so we're going to hold off on that one. Next is special education subcommittee, Erin Di Benedetto.
Thank you. So, we had a special education subcommittee meeting on May 28 of 2019, and we talked further about the two, two issues, two items that we have been working on throughout the school year. The first is disability awareness program, and the second is out-of-school time programming for all students. So, in it, we, we had many people in attendance, committee members, Paulette Van de Cluut, Paul Rousseau, we had the CPAC coordinators, co-chairs, rather, and we talked a little bit about the new PD program that was given to district teachers, where disability awareness was infused with the existing curriculum. And teachers wrote inclusive curriculum, and an impactful presentation was given by Melanie McLaughlin. For the first of these six classes, approximately 45 students, teachers attended this programming. It went extremely well and was very well received by the professionals in our, in our district. We went further on to talk about our OST, which is something I call it, is out-of-school time programming. That would be before and after-school programming, summer programming, and camps that happen. Inclusive and welcoming wording was added to the summer fun camp and before and after-school handbooks. The summer fun camp staff are hired and ready to go, and inclusive training will occur prior to the first week of camp. Before and after-school programs were not fully staffed at the end of this year, so they reached out to returning college students coming back home and tried to fill the gaps with, with those, those, those students. Enrollment for next year for the after-school in program is, there is long wait lists at multiple schools. Inclusive training will begin, be given to all of those new team members prior to the beginning of the school year. And we ended this meeting with a goodbye celebration for Kathy Madaglio and thanking her for all her years of service to the Medford Public School community. She's been a wonderful director of student services, and we've been very lucky to have her serving our, our students in our community for all these years. And she's sitting here this evening, so, again, I want to thank her. That's the report.
Okay, motion to accept.
Second.
Yes.
Second, sure, absolutely.
Okay, and so I have a report from the rules subcommittee. We had two meetings, one was on June 13, and the other one was on June 19. The purpose of our meetings was to update the rules and regulations of the Medford School Committee. Everyone has in their packets a copy of the old document. It was either from 2004 or older. We're really not sure about the historical date. And you have a copy of the updated 2019 document. And we went through, and we updated chapters 1 through 10. So at the, we broke it up into two separate meetings. On the June 13, we discussed chapters 1 to 6. In June 19, we discussed chapters 7 to 10, and we made a motion to accept the changes that were put, put ahead in the documents. You'll see throughout the entire document, we remove words such as chairman, replace it with chairperson, and words him, his, or her will replace with gender-free words. Also, you will see a new section at the bottom of the, of the documents. And thank you to Mr. Rousseau for coming up with this great idea. It is the policy information such as first adopted date, last amended date, last renewed date, renewed frequency, next renewal, and version number, so that we can easily identify what the age of the document and determine, like, when is it going to need to be updated, the next date. And I want to just thank all the committee members for coming to the meetings. We did spend several hours in the meetings, going through the very old language and updating it to, you know, 2019 language. Some of it was very old. And we also reached out to several different administrators. Diane Caldwell assisted, Christine Patterson assisted, let's see, Headmaster DeLeva, Principal Fallon, Supervisor of Nurses Tony Ray, and, you know, emailing, just going back and forth. And thank you to Dr. Edward Vincent, she was a great asset to the meeting as well, and my colleagues, thank you as well. Thank you all for your hard work and efforts, and I hope everybody had a chance to review the documents. And Erin, did you have a question?
I have, I have actually two questions regarding this document.
Okay.
On page 3, towards the bottom, section 6, it says, "Any Medford resident and attendance may be given permission to speak once at the school committee meetings regarding any item on the agenda for up to three minutes on any one item." It, it just makes it sound like a resident can only come to the mic and speak once throughout the whole meeting, the wording of that.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So that is, that is only, that is a reference only to the, there's an item on the agenda and you want to say something. This isn't the regular community participation. You can come to each item if you want to speak on five of the items on the agenda. You'd be able to come up five times, yeah.
Great, just, just looking for clarification there.
Okay.
And my second question is on the next page, 4 out of 15, section 8.
Section 8, okay.
"School committee members who wish to place items on the agenda will provide written notice to the chairperson by Monday noon prior to the scheduled meeting or at the discretion of the chairperson based on extenuating circumstances." So, I have a question. Does a chairperson get to decline any item brought forward by a member to be put on the agenda? Because that happened to me last year. I wanted an item added to the agenda, and the chairperson executed their right not to put it on the agenda, and I would like that addressed in this policy.
Mr. Rousseau?
Yes, so, this is actually, other than the date, this is current policy, and the, and because it also earlier states, "We're following Robert's Rules Newly Revised." If that happens, and this happened to me as well, then that can be at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Then a member can simply ask that it be put on the agenda anyways for the following meeting, and then if, as long as four members say, "Yes, we want that on the agenda," then the chair loses the right to say no, effectively. So, the chair does have the right to not put it on, but we can override at the next official meeting.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's sort of the way it's been?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we've ever done that.
I would, I would like to see a change where the chairperson does not have the right to put a member's item on the agenda, only because as elected officials, we're here to voice for the community, and I think that a chairperson having that override really prevents you to, from doing your due diligence as a school committee member. So, I am requesting that that be added to this.
I, if I may, I mean, our charter says Robert's Rules Newly Revised, and that gives the chair that authority. We, I don't think we can do a policy that overrides the charter. That's, I mean, we can write anything we want here, but that doesn't mean it's enforceable, and that's sort of my issue.
Point of clarification as well?
Mr. Giraud?
So, in terms of, let's say there's a pressing item that the chair refuses to speak about, that's important to the community, maybe as an emergency situation, the, we could vote as a supermajority to make sure that issue is spoken of by taking an item out of order from the agenda or just reviewing it. So, and a ruling of, any ruling of the chair can be overridden. We do have, if there is like a stated emergency, that would require that, that the chair refuses to recognize.
Point of clarification, but, but you're not saying an item not on the agenda can be discussed?
Well, in, in terms of an emergency situation, so we do have the authority via open meeting laws to discuss those issues. If the chair refuses to put that emergency item on the agenda, we can force that issue to be recognized via, under open meeting law as long as there's a supermajority, and we wouldn't violate any open meeting clause if it's an emergency issue.
I just think the, the word emergency, I, I just can't foresee the chairperson not putting it on the agenda if there's an actual emergency.
Nor could I, nor could I, but we do have the authority as a body.
Emergency can't be, every person gets to decide what's an emergency, and that I'm a little concerned about. Just because I think it's important and we need to talk about it, doesn't make it an emergency.
A supermajority would have to agree that it is an emergency.
All right, well, I, I can just, I accept that that's the rule. I also feel like it's a little bit of censorship as a, that, that one person from our committee gets to decide whether or not something is discussed on any given week. So, I object to that, but I'm, I'm happy with moving forward with this, at this point.
Yes, so is there a motion to accept the report?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Giraud, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And is there anybody here for community participation? No? Okay. Okay, so report from superintendent.
Can we, can we take an item out of?
Oh, sure, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not.
Gotcha.
No? Okay.
Report of the superintendent. As you are aware, Medford Public Schools ended classes on Thursday, June 13. On Monday, June 17, my team and I engaged in a three-day retreat with all school, school administrators. The interactive retreat continued until Wednesday, June 19, and was held at the Bistro 489. We discussed many topics, including but not limited to, the social-emotional health of our students, leadership and professional development, mentorship of new educators, event scheduling across the district, after-school programming and space, technology updates in the district, and mobile communication apps. Medford High School Assistant Principal Gail Trainer was presented with the newly inaugurated Mustang Administrator Unsung Hero Award for her outstanding award, outstanding work, not only as an assistant principal, but also for her work as coordinator for the Credit for Life Financial Literacy Fair, and her meticulous planning and organization of the recent Medford High School, Medford Vocational School graduation ceremony. We were excited that our incoming Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Peter Cushing, also joined us during the retreat. Administrators will continue their work over the, over the summer, the work that was started at the retreat in preparation for the new school year, and we will have a opening of school administrative meeting in August for all administrators, again, for us to work and plan for the school year that's coming. Medford Public Schools is going to be quite busy over the summer. Summer school began today, not as well as our annual summer fun day camp. Some of Medford's recreation programs are being held in the district, as well as special education and EL summer programs. The vocational side of the house hosted their CTE camp for middle schoolers last week, and over 40 students participated. Many athletic camps are also being hosted by the Medford High School basketball, volleyball, and soccer programs. Mustang girls softball team had a good run in the MIAA softball playoffs, earning a bye in the first round, beating the Woburn Tanners in the second round, and unfortunately, losing to Central Catholic in the third round. The team finished with a 19-3 record. Congratulations to Coach Dempsey, Coach Pags, and the girls on a fantastic season. Additionally, Coach Dempsey notified me that Captain Brenna Forbes will be named to both the Boston Globe and the Boston Herald's, all scholastic softball teams. It is not often that a high school athlete is selected by both of Boston newspapers. A National Honor Society student, Brianna will be attending Colby, Colby College in the fall and is planning to play both hockey and softball there. We congratulate her and her family, and as many of you know, her mother, Rayanne, is a Medford High School girls hockey coach. Tristan Howard, he competed nationally in the 200 meters last weekend. Unfortunately, he was disqualified for stepping out of bounds. Had he stayed in bounds, he would have finished 18th in the nation. We still applaud him for a fantastic year and look forward to his senior year in the fall. Athletic Director Bob Maloney and Headmaster DeLeva welcomed a new girls' basketball coach at Medford High School. Molly Waite, an educator in Melrose, was chosen as the new head coach. She has experience as both a player at Westfield State University and as a coach at many different levels. We welcome Coach Wyatt to the Mustang family. Last Saturday, the top two winners from the Andrews Middle School 7th Grade Science Fair were asked to present their work at the MIT Museum for visitors and guests. The students, Eric Brown, Matthew Harris, and Sarah Braverman, attended with their teacher, Eric Prylison, and were excited to be able to discuss their projects. Mr. Prylison connected with the museum last year, and the museum decided to partner with the Andrews in this way. Some of you were able to join with us, as Medford High School's Gay Straight Alliance, GSA, dedicated the pride flag along with a plaque that reads, "Love Wins" in the main lobby of the school. If you noticed it in last Thursday's Globe, the GSA was highlighted for their participation in Boston's 2019 Pride Parade. We applaud Nicole Shalafel and Emily Simpson and all the students for their outstanding work. We have spoken a lot about the opportunity for the middle school students to work together, and this year, "Learn Something, Make Something" in the library was introduced to students in the Andrews and McGlynn Middle School libraries. The MPS Middle School libraries and Medford Public Library successfully partnered to offer a series of STEAM workshops to middle school students during the year. All workshops were held after school in the school library about every other week, alternating between the two schools. All middle school students were invited to sign up. The workshops provided a nice bridge between books and hands-on learning, and had students see the library as a place for active learning and critical thinking. The Medford Public Schools would like to thank the Medford Public Library, the Medford Arts Council, and the Massachusetts Cultural Council for their support of this wonderful project. We can't wait to see what they will do next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent.
Mayor Burke.
Mr. Giraud?
Motion to take Papers Number 3 out of order, please.
On the motion for suspension of the rules to take a paper out of order, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rousseau, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, item 3, recognition of Kiwanis Club literacy project. Ms. Caldwell?
Good evening again. First of all, this isn't just the literacy project. I'd like to welcome our Kiwanians that are here this evening, there's a whole bunch of them. This report is in recognition of the incredible year-long support to all of the students and to the staff of Medford. Throughout the year, the Kiwanis Club worked with our staff and students about becoming better citizens and making positive contributions to their community. The list below provides you with some of the many activities the Kiwanis Club is involved with in our schools. The Builders Club at both the Andrews and the McGlynn Middle Schools help our kids with fundraising so they, that they can give back to the less fortunate. One of the fundraisers helped to support the Medford Food Bank. The Key Club is the oldest service program for high school students. It is a student-led organization whose goal is to encourage leadership through serving others. Under the leadership of Mrs. Melissa Solomon this year, students have the opportunity to earn community service hours for their participation. Students forge strong friendships with each other. The Key Club enriched students' lives through a greater sense of social concerns and improved the community of Medford as a whole. But the Kiwanis Club does more. It supports our Center for Citizenship and Social Responsibility, otherwise known as CCASR, as well as Medford High School Athletics, Football Band, Hockey, and the Culinary Arts Program. Additionally, the Kiwanis Club supports the Medford High School Alumni Association and has sponsored the MHS Up All Night Junior Prom. The literacy project is something that's very, very close to my heart, as you all know. It provides summer reading books to our first and third grade students. We've been doing this for a long time, and I consider myself a adopted Kiwanian, I think. So, this was an idea that was brought to us in Medford Public Schools many, many years ago. So this was an idea that was brought to us in Medford Public Schools many, many years ago for some of our kiddos who don't have books to read during the summer. So the Kiwanis orders books for Grade One and books for Grade Three in every single one of our elementary schools, as well as our private prokeal schools as well. And when you see these kids open up their bags and pull out these books, the smile on their faces is just incredible. And they already want to start reading, and then they look at their books and say, "Oh, wait a minute, I read, this is a girl's book, maybe I should give this to my friend." And they want to swap right away, but we tell them they have to wait till they get back to their classroom. So, our thanks to all of the Kiwanis members and what they do for the city of Medford, but most importantly, what they do for our children. So, Ms. Kelly Talon is now the president of the Kiwanis Club. We would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation. The Medford Public Schools is proud to recognize the Kiwanis Club with sincere appreciation for their dedication to the students of Medford. Mayor Stephanie Muccini Burke, Chairman, oh Chairman, it says, we need to change.
We just did all our rules changes.
I know, I know. Did make your certificate. Kathy Kretz, Vice Chairperson, we got that one right. Erin Di Benedetto, Mia Mostone, Secretary. Dr. Marie Seidward, Vincent Superintendent. Michael Ruggiero, Paul Russo, and Paulette Vander Clu.
Very good. I've had the privilege at being at some of your book giveaways, and the kids' faces are just like, they're so excited and so elated. And all that you do for our community, from your road races to everything that you do is just outstanding, and we so adore having you in our community and everything you bring to it. So, thank you all, the Kiwanis that are here tonight. I know Counselor Carviallo would have been here if he could have, he's in a budget hearing at City Hall, but I know he would not have missed this for the world, so congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
So, on behalf of our Kiwanis family, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to partner with you on all these great things for our children because it creates one great community in Medford. I'm very proud of how much our club has grown in numbers and in spirit this year, and the many things that we've been able to do. And this was a night that needed to be shared with the whole family, so we hope that we didn't bring too many.
No, but I love it, it's awesome.
And we want to acknowledge Representative Paul Donato, member of the Kiwanis, who's also here tonight, so thanks for joining. Very good.
Thank you.
Motion to revert back.
Is the motion to revert back to the regular order of business? Seconded by Mr. Benedetto, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye, Rachel. All those opposed?
Bye, Rachel.
Motion passes. Recommendation to approve Mass General Cannabis Study, Ms. Ray.
Good evening. We've been fortunate to have Dr. Randy Schuster here twice at our school committee meetings. First, to present some up-to-date information about adolescent marijuana use, as well as the impact on the developing brain. And second, to provide information about the research study that she's conducting on marijuana abstinence. Dr. Schuster has partnered with several Massachusetts school districts, and her data is demonstrating many positive outcomes from marijuana abstinence. As a district, we've used the ESPT model to open conversations about substance use, to identify students who are engaging in risky behaviors, provide education and support, and make appropriate referrals. And Dr. Schuster's study will expand upon this support and assist counselors, nurses, and parents in providing assistance to our students. We plan to use ESPT screening as the model, which mandates that we ask students about their marijuana use. A brief voluntary survey will be conducted with all high school students to determine who would be interested in participating in the study. At that time, enrollment in the study will require student and parent consent through the Mass General Hospital Institutional Review Board process. Confidentiality will be maintained throughout the duration of the study, unless the interviewer deems that the student is harmful to himself or others. So it's my recommendation and supported by the high school administrative staff that we approve Dr. Schuster's study at Medford High School beginning the fall of 2019.
I make a motion to accept.
I second.
I have a question.
Is a motion on the floor for acceptance of this?
And I second.
And a second by Ms. Kretz, Mr. Russo has a question.
Yes, so I know when this was presented, we were considering going to middle school as well. I'm curious why we're not including middle schoolers.
Dr. Schuster, I don't have to defer to you on that one?
The short answer is, I will go wherever you say it's okay for me to go. I spoke with one of the principals on the way out today, and he said the doors were open. We have the staff to work in middle schools and high schools. We are going to be in multiple middle schools across, I apologize for my voice, multiple middle schools across the state in the fall. And it is my belief that the younger we can start this conversation, the better. So I would be wholeheartedly in favor of rolling out in both middle schools and high schools, in the middle schools and the high school in the fall. But if, you know, if it's the preference of the committee to start in Year One in the high school and then reevaluate in Year Two, I'm open to that as well, but as I said.
Shall I make an amendment?
Actually, I just first want to ask Ms. Ray if she has any reservations or any reason.
No, not at all.
Okay, well, then I would like to amend this to include the middle school.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion to amend, it's seconded by Ms. Di Benedetto. On the main motion as amended, Mr. Giro.
Two questions as well, thank you. The first question I have was your mix of the opt-in versus the opt-out model that you have. So the original screening, students are just going to have the survey if they want to fill it out or not, is that their option? But if they get included in the study, it requires both consent of the student and the parents. Is that still the model that we're using?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the second question I had is, you mentioned before that it would be possible to include a couple of other questions.
Yep.
It would be great if we could have a question also on vaping, and a question on maybe activity levels, including like diabetes and sugary drink consumption.
So our survey, as it stands right now, and I believe it was in some of the materials that I gave you a few weeks ago, we have a lot of questions on vaping in there. I think that's something that we really need to be thinking about in tandem with marijuana use, so we are capturing that extensively at a school-wide level. And I'm happy to add an additional question about activity level.
And yeah, it'd be nice if we could have a question about sugary drink consumption as well, because that is a really rising health cost, as you know.
Yep, and that is information that we collect at detail when students are enrolled in the study. So that's certainly information that already I know that we can deliver back, but the screener, the school-wide screener is certainly amenable to that as well.
Yeah, I don't know if this requires an amendment, and I also don't want to jeopardize the scientific value by including every single question under the sun. But if it doesn't actually jeopardize the scientific value of your study, I would prefer questions about obesity and sugary drink consumption and activity levels to also be included.
Perhaps Ms. Ray could work on them?
We can definitely work together. I think we'd have to discuss how that would link together in terms of this study and whether it's, you know.
Of course.
But I don't want to invalidate any work that.
Of course, that's the most important, I mean, I understand, I don't want you to jeopardize the scientific value of what you're doing by expanding out the scope.
I appreciate that, and what I can say is, I'm certainly open to it. I don't think it would jeopardize the scientific scope of the study whatsoever. The potential rate-limiting step on my part will be the MGH and Harvard Medical School IRB.
Okay.
They need to see that all questions are directly related to the scientific goals of the study.
Okay.
And they don't want us taking advantage of that opt-out process. So barring that they say no to that, I'm perfectly open to including.
I mean, I don't think this requires an amendment, but if you could look into that fourth, I'd really appreciate it.
May I just ask a question though?
Yeah.
What would you see as the link between those questions and this study?
Well, I would imagine, I mean, I'm speculating, I don't have the scientific data in front of me, but I would imagine that children that tend to be less active and also have a poorer dietary like environment also have a higher likelihood to use marijuana. I don't know if I have any evidence of that, but it would seem at least sort of, you know, you imagine sort of the person smoking pot, watching TV, eating Doritos. I mean, that could be a cliche, or perhaps there's some scientific truth to that fact.
So one of the things that we're collecting that you'll be interested in that is an important outcome of the, the part of the project where we require parental consent. So once they actually enroll in the study, is we look at when an adolescent stops using marijuana, what happens to their activity level, and food intake. So those are things that we're directly linking to changes in marijuana use and can certainly look into adding in at the school-wide level.
The reason why I mention it is I've had a couple of parents now talk to me about, you know, their child was involved in middle school sports, and they were very athletic, and then the vaping and the drug use came into their lives, and all of that stopped.
Yep.
So, I mean, I would be curious to see whether that correlation actually is valid or if it's just sort of like word on the street, what I hear.
Yep.
Thank you, Doctor.
Very good, there's a motion on the floor to approve Dr. Randy Schuster's marijuana abstinence study at Medford High School and Medford Middle Schools for the 1920 year. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Kretz.
Yes.
Member Mostone, yes, Member Giro.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Member Vander Clu.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Recommendation to approve no-school-choice district, Dr. Edward Vincent. This is something traditionally we have chosen not to opt into. Do we need a report? No. Is there a motion, motion by Mr. Russo? Seconded by Ms. Vander Clu. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Kretz.
Yes.
Member Mostone, yes, Member Giro.
Yes.
Member Russo.
Yes.
Member Vander Clu.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes, thank you very much. Recommendation to approve school committee meeting dates for school year 1920.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve by Mr. Giro, seconded by Ms. Vander Clu. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Kretz.
Yes.
Member Mostone, yes, Member Giro.
Yes.
Member Russo.
Yes.
Member Vander Clu.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Could we also just put a note to advertise the budget hearing somewhere in our calendar?
Yes.
On our front and center and on mine.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have.
Free breakfast, one feasibility?
Do you want to go back to your?
Committee of the Hall, Superintendent's Evaluation. Earlier this evening, we have, wait, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we have one more item before we go back. Report on feasibility of universal free breakfast using Provision Two, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying I don't always deliver bad news with this report. The last meeting of the school year. So, again, thanks to this committee and some crunch-time research. The Food Service Department, Ms. Jewel Bradley, and myself and other entities worked very diligently to pull together information to look at the feasibility and possibility of Provision Two, which is free breakfast for all schools. Currently, breakfast is being served at three mandated breakfast sites, which are the Columbus, the McGlin Elementary, and the McGlin Middle School. Utilizing the guidelines from the Food Research and Action Center, FRAC, communications with state departments, and engaging with outside resources in a short timeframe, we were able to offer the following information. We reached out to the Massachusetts School Nutrition Association Board and their member, Mr. Robert Shaheen, and conducted a site visit for purpose of identifying streamlined breakfast delivery methods that would encourage participation for breakfast at all locations. Mr. Shaheen has been in school food service many years, and he is an advocate for school meals at the Beacon Hill and Washington DC, serving on many boards within his SNA role. Mr. Shaheen observed the breakfast program at the Roberts, and he offered ideas, potential costs, and recommended food items that could assist Medford in considering a free breakfast program. Upon his visit, he complimented the kitchen on its cleanliness and based his assessment at the end of his visit by suggesting a pilot program to confirm if free breakfast could pay for itself. A conference call on June 20th was also conducted with education specialist at the Department of Ed, Kevin Dawson, along with myself and Ms. Jewel Bradley. He indicated that the program is a four-year commitment, with Year One being the base year to determine participation levels district-wide. The enrollment can be included as part of the annual food service application, and the process through the DUCI portal is very simplistic in regard to accessing this Provision Two breakfast for all the schools. Mr. Dawson also stated that the best option would be to conduct a short-term pilot program to determine if participation levels were there to keep the program running. And if costs were excessive and/or participation rates did not justify the expenses, that we could opt out with the notification to the Department of Ed. Further calculation scenarios were explored. However, there are so many variables with food costs, labor rates, to address a large-scale breakfast program. Honing in on that profit and loss scenario was very difficult. So the expected level of staffing at each building that's not currently serving the mandated breakfast would be two to three more daily food service members in the morning to prepare and serve the meals at roughly $600 per week per building, just for the labor costs. But given our enthusiasm to feed the children of Medford and with the recommendation of experts in the field, partnership with Jewel Bradley, our food service director, I offer the following recommendation. That we adopt Provision Two under a full-scale free breakfast pilot program during the first quarter of the school year, the months of September, October, and November of 2019. And upon the third month, we review the participation reimbursement expense levels to conclude if the program is viable to continue. A report will be provided at the First School Committee in December of 2019. And if this was your vote, we would do a full-scale advertisement informing all of the families in Medford that come Day One of the new school year, all students would be able to have free breakfast, hot and cold options, at every school building.
Mr. Benedetto, then Mr. Russo, then Mr. Giro.
Thank you for your work on this. Is this the same program as breakfast after the bell, or is that a different program?
So breakfast is breakfast. So there are many different ways to deliver breakfast. And again, all breakfast has been being served in all of our school buildings. This is just a mechanism to provide more participation and say it's free under Provision Two. So the district is committing to free breakfast for all, which in turn is hopeful that all the students would take advantage of that and participate in a free breakfast, knowing that sometimes it's a busy schedule in the morning, sometimes children don't have a hot breakfast meal, and it is the most important meal of the day. And if we can provide that in a Provision Two free category, we would be serving so many families.
Do we look into the breakfast after the bell and the grant opportunity of $10,000 per school that signs up for the breakfast after the bell program?
So that's a different component that's not part of this, and that's something specific.
If you looked at both programs and made an informed decision between the two?
We wouldn't be able to participate if we waited for that grant opportunity. So this is an option to be able to utilize and run a pilot program without having to wait and really see what that would entail. So a $10,000 investment may not be enough, and that's what we will really find out by running this pilot program for the first three months, which are usually the most active months of a school year.
No, I'm happy that you're presenting us with an option. I just wanted to make sure that we were taking every opportunity given to us when a private group approached a committee member with an opportunity to write the grants for us, for us to receive $10,000 per school to do a startup. I just wanted to make sure we looked at that as well as this program and picked the right program that we can sustain long-term. And if we're just picking one and not looking at all options, I want to make sure that all students are fed for indefinitely, not just a pilot program.
So this is really a public item, we're not engaging private sectors for this particular?
It's a nonprofit programming that helps many school districts throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to provide at no cost to them, and they don't gain anything. It's a public service that they provide, and they do it in the most needy of areas throughout the state of Massachusetts, and they graciously offered to help Medford write the grant, actually write them for us. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at every option available to us so that we have the correct program that we can sustain throughout the whole, the future of Medford Public Schools. I just want to feed hungry kids, but I want to do it in a way that it doesn't have to stop in December because it's costing us too much money. I just want to make sure we do it in our due diligence and do it once, do it right, and make sure we did our homework.
$10,000 wouldn't.
$10,000 would not.
Either, but it's not enough to cover.
It would be the startup costs.
Could I make a?
Mr. Russo's next.
Thank you, it's nice that you're not delivering bad news, or that we have to argue about this. I would just like to make a, well, let me back up a second. So I think that.
So, I think that, um, the committee should have to vote for the opt-out to take place. It should not be an administrative decision.
It, it really needs to be programmatic because the food service program has to be in the black. It cannot, it cannot operate in a deficit. That's by not only state law, but that's federal. We will lose our funding.
Okay.
So, we cannot just function in a deficit in that regard.
I, okay. I can accept that. Um, but, you know, the McGlin Elementary has about a 22% participation. They have free breakfast now. And the Columbus has a 93% participation. And it's my understanding of provision-two, the name of the game here is participation.
Correct.
Um, and the only reason that there's a 71% difference in participation is because at Columbus, it's after the bell. So, I'm not really even comfortable wasting three months of time if we're not making it after the bell at the elementary schools. Because there's no reason to believe that the McGlin students are suddenly going to start eating when they've been able to. So, I mean, I know it's a lot of work to go to after-the-bell breakfast. But, I mean, we're not doing this just to feel good like we checked the box.
No, and, and the real, the, the plan with food service is that this would be a full-on, real process to encourage students to, to come in and eat a hot breakfast. So, that's the real push. We are going to make it, because again, the numbers aren't there to warrant additional staffing, there isn't additional staffing at some of the buildings. So, if we commit to doing a full breakfast, a full hot meal, additional options and really roll out the red carpet, if you will, on the breakfast program and get that excitement from day one, that's our hope, that we would gather that participation level in a new scope and a new scale that hasn't been done so before. And really, again, reach out to the parents in early communications throughout the summer indicating, "Your child will eat free beginning the first day of school under this provision-two." And in, in terms of, in terms of after the bell, that is a much more challenging program to implement because we're talking about schedules, we're talking about classroom areas and getting the particulars in place. Obviously, the Columbus has been doing it for many, many years. So, their, their building is, is working seamlessly.
But if I may, um, free breakfast that requires that you're actually there before school starts, which is what we're talking about, right? Um, I mean, you can go to any elementary school and watch the kids being dropped off one minute before the bell. Not two kids, like dozens of them. Um, and also, like, what about when the bus just shows up just at the last minute? None of these scenarios will enable a kid to eat if they're not after the bell.
I think the partnership would have to be with principals, that if a bus is late, that they would offer five minutes, five, 10 minutes additional for students to go through the line i- in a breakfast format, just like they do for additional lunchtime if there was something that occurred during the day. They offer additional bell service to account and adjust for something that might take place. If there's an extended fire drill or something of sorts during the day that, that cuts into their lunchtime, they are given additional time through the principal scheduling. So, that would be the hope, that we would be communicating with principals and be able to put that in place, um, before the start of school this, this coming fall.
I have one more question.
But it's not just the elementaries. So, again, like, I think that that's important to recognize, that the high schoolers are not eating a breakfast. So, this is a big push to get high schoolers to eat a meal. And I, we know for certain that high schoolers are here well before the bell and, and have that opportunity to, you know, not only is it a socializing event, but if they can go get a free meal and they know it's a hot meal and they, they like what they're eating, the whole hope is that they will come in and be encouraged to eat that breakfast meal every day.
So, I, I just have one more question. Um, so, if we, at the end of the three months, opt out because it is fiscally totally impossible, um, does this opt-out prevent us from next year?
No, it does not.
Saying we're going to do after the bell and we're going to try again. We can do it all over again next year if it doesn't work.
Yes, we can.
That's good. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gero?
So, um, thank you very much for rushing out this report. I know that we all asked you to expedite it and with all the other budgetary work that you had, I really appreciate it because, um, as I mentioned before, as a former educator, I know what it's like when kids show up hungry and I've seen the effects. You know, I've taught at both kinds of schools.
But I do share Member Russo's, um, reservations about not doing an after-the-bell program. Um, when kids have the opportunity, you know, if mom and dad are running late, that kid doesn't eat.
And one of the issues that we, we talked about at the superintendent review was making sure we have a consistent program throughout the entire system. I guess the way I feel about it is that, you know, if you're a child in poverty, it doesn't matter, matter whether you go to the Columbus or the McGlin. I just want to make sure that kid's, kid's fed. So, I would like to suggest, under this pilot, since we're running a pilot, I would like to have a consistent after-the-bell program. Uh, that would be what we test, not sort of, "We try this, we try this, we try this." I want to see what happens when the entire district has an after-the-bell program. And if we have something like 90% participation, then we would know that we have a, we have an issue.
Seeking a second on that or is that a motion?
If I could just say...
Oh, yes.
So, we have time and learning that we have to do. This is mandated by federal and state law that we have to do. With the Columbus Elementary School, they have been doing this for a very long time. And I'm the first one to say I want every child to have breakfast. I really do. Of course, I know. Um, there was a point in time that we had a huge rodent problem at the McGlin Elementary School. And I, Michael, I don't even know if you were on the school committee at that time. Um, it cost us thousands and thousands of dollars to replace the books and the materials that the teachers lost. The time and learning that was lost with the kids having to go to the auditorium because they couldn't be in their rooms. So, it wasn't that the McGlin Elementary School didn't want the kids to have breakfast. It was a rodent problem that we had. I think we need buy-in from our principals as well. I think we need to talk about this. I think every principal wants their child to eat. And I, if you have them come in, whether it's before or after the bell, then I think that as long as the kids have the opportunity, I think we should move forward with what Christine is suggesting.
Okay, there's a motion for approval.
I, I just one more question.
One more question? And then we have a couple of questions on the end, too. Um, actually, Ms. Kreutz, will you hand?
Um, yes, so, are you making a motion for the after the bell?
I would, I mean, I would, I understand, I understand your reservations. I really do. I guess it comes to a question of what we are capable as a community. And I believe, and I understand, it's like one more thing that Member Gero has thrown at the principals and, but on this particular issue, I do believe it has a significant impact on educational standards and it will be seen throughout the entire school system. So, I would, if none of my, no one wishes to second this motion, that's fine, but I would like to make a motion that we do a universal after-the-bell program for breakfast. That we, that's the one we pilot. And if it doesn't work, if we can't get it to work by November, then we can regroup and say, you know, "It just didn't happen at the McGlin because of rodents."
So, if I can offer some feedback from the food service side, as, as much as that would be ideal and, and in all the greater scheme, in the context of being able to do a pilot program, again, a pilot program is something you, you, you try for a brief amount of time and you, you put everything into it that you can. Our food service department is not prepared to, to do an after-the-bell. There's different components. There are, um, travel items that are needed to carry the, the breakfast. It's not just, it's not a hot meal necessarily. It's ve- it's varying items of what can be provided in an after-the-bell scenario. We are trying to do a full-scale, broad-based breakfast program, really having hot meal options, really having additional components for all of the different fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, fresh, um, milk and cereal that's, it's part of the, the daily components anyway. But in order to do that, we also have to train our food service folks at these various buildings. Now, they're used to and understand the meaning of morning prep and delivery of a meal and cleanup from that to, to prepare for the lunch service. In terms of a model that is breakfast after the bell, that's a significant different model that would, that would require more training. And now that the school is out, we won't have any opportunity to, to engage with our food service staff in order to do that. So, this was the, the hope, to be able to pilot a program that, that would really engage and, and get the interest of not only our food service department, whose main, um, goal is to feed the children of Medford, but also to, to really offer varying items for the breakfast menu selection to, to engage the students and, and get their, get their own buy-in for, for breakfast and, and why they would want to come to school and, and eat breakfast.
Mr. Russo?
Yes, so, um, I, I guess, um, my issue is with a pilot, and I understand the need to, to stay in the black. But, um, like, the idea that one day we're serving all of the kids free breakfast and then the next day, which I realize it'll happen over a break, but the next day, kids will come to school who will not have heard that, starting on January 3rd or whatever, you no longer get breakfast for free. Like, that doesn't even sound like something that we could implement short of doing exactly the lunch shaming policy that we adopted. No, you can't have that because you don't have any money. I mean, uh, so, I just worry that doing a pilot, I, I get it, why we want to do this, but, um, if there's a chance that we would actually turn it off, um, I, I, I can't wrap my head around that, frankly. So, um, I really do think the committee should have to approve turning it off. And if you come to us and say, "We need to turn it off because we're running a, a deficit of $10,000 a week" or whatever, um, I think the committee should be the folks to say, "We can't afford it. We aren't going to make up the money from somewhere else" or whatever. I just don't think it should be administrative decision that suddenly kids that were getting free breakfast and we're going to advertise the heck out of it so everybody knows, and then suddenly they come to school and they don't get free breakfast. That's just, you know, I grew up without breakfast every single day in my childhood. And the entire idea of that, I mean, I can't even imagine what that would be like. And sure, many kids are going to eat free breakfast that have breakfast at home, too, but not all of them. So, I, I'm not okay with approving this if we don't approve the termination of the...
So, in this proposal, there was no indication that it was an administrative review and that, that's why I specified you would be presented with the findings in early December. So, it would, it would be a, a vote of the committee, but I would hope that there'd be recognition if there's the levels that are, don't speak to continuing a program.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor for approval by Mr. Russo, by Ms. Mustone.
Mayor Burr, I believe that there's someone in the committee that would like to speak on this issue.
Hi, I'm Melanie McLaughlin, Alston Street, Medford, Mass. As a community member, that was the first time that I heard the statistic that you mentioned, Paul, around, um, the Columbus, um, school program getting, what, did you say, 70% participation?
93%.
90, 90 what?
93%.
93 and the McGlin was 22?
I believe it's 22.
Um, and so, as we're thinking, and that was just, I, I gasped out loud because I was really shocked by that. And also, as a, um, child who went hungry as a little girl as well, I really empathize with that in our community. And as we're thinking about equity in our district, I really want us to think about why that is happening, right? So, why is the Columbus Elementary School having 90-something percent participation and the McGlin is having whatever percent, 22% participation? And how are we feeding all of Medford students? And I know that it's not an easy answer and I know that, you know, Christine's done a lot of work and you folks have done a lot of work as well, but there's got to be some kind of a compromise around making sure that all of our children are being fed. Um, and in a way that, you know, whether it's after the bell or before the bell or however it is, but we have to increase that participation at all the schools. And also, I didn't know about the rodent issue at the McGlin, which is really concerning, um, to say the least. So, how do we embrace all of our elementary schools to make sure that all of our children are fed? Because as we all know, you can't concentrate on your school if you're not fed. And so, um, I just wanted to put that forward as a community member. Thank you.
Several years ago was the rodent issue, not current.
It didn't happen. Not under her watch.
Melanie, Ms. Vanderklut?
So, I, I would think that it, it seems to me that there, it, there is a leap of faith here to some extent, um, by going with this. Because what we're, what we're, we, we have this statistics between two of our schools and someone answered about a bus being late. Well, I'm sure hoping that the principal who's meeting that bus that is late is the caring individual who we know that they are and who will usher that it's not a, you know, all of a sudden breakfast is going to close and the door's closed and there's no chance. When I was a guidance counselor over in Everett, um, there was a child who consistently came late to school and, um, we knew had no food. And I want to tell you, we always managed to get that child food if, by going down to the kitchen, by getting help, and we had no breakfast program at that time, uh, set up for that. But there were caring individuals in our buildings. I am sure that there are other people in our buildings who want to make this work. And I'm betting on that. So, I'm going to bet on that and, and vote for approval of this. And then see, we might have kinks, we might have to work it out, we might have to revisit, but I'm at least willing to try it. So, that's where I'll come down tonight.
Thank you. Very good. There is a motion on the floor. Ms. Mustone, did you want to think?
Just shortly, I want to thank Ms. Patterson and the superintendent because we have been talking about breakfast in the schools for three and a half years and this is the first time that a compromise, it's not what our wish list is, but it's a beginning and it can expand and we can grow it and the word is getting out there. So, I truly appreciate your compromise right there. So, I vote also to approve this report of universal free breakfast.
There is a motion on the floor for approval of free breakfast by Mr. Russo, seconded by Ms. Mustone. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Member Kreutz?
Yes.
Member Mustone, yes. Member Gero?
Yes.
Member Russo?
Yes.
Member Vanderklut?
Yes.
Mayor Burr?
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. Thank you, Christine, for all your work.
Thank you. Motion to take a paper out of water, Mayor Burr.
We do have two more resolutions. School committee resolution, be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expressed its sincere condolences to the family of Rosemary Nicholson. Ms. Nicholson was a longtime educator and elementary school principal in Medford. Be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expressed its sincere condolences to the family of Joseph Grandy. Mr. Grandy was a former vocational teacher at Medford Vocational Technical High School and a former director and coach at North Medford Little League. He was also the grandfather of Brooks School Teacher at Camille Fargo. We could all rise for a moment silent on the passing of these two Medford alum. Thank you. Motion to take Committee of the Whole Superintendent's Evaluation Paper that was, uh, tabled earlier this evening from the table. Is there a motion by Ms. Vanderklut, seconded by Mr. Russo? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Earlier this evening, we met, um, in the conference room to, uh, in open meeting to discuss the superintendent's, uh, progress this year and to evaluate her in compliance with DESI. Overall, she had a unanimous vote of proficient in all of the four standards. Uh, some, there were different pieces to this thing, some were over proficient, some were at proficient. There was nothing less than proficient. And I think that the school committee just wants to state for the record how, um, extremely pleased we are with you at the helm, uh, how the public and the students have responded to you at the helm. It's been very, very positive and we look forward to it even getting better and better. And I know some items popped up that we feel the first year really, you can't even evaluate someone on this, but what you do with the data you obtain, how you make changes and how you get buy-in, because we know you're such a positive voice and force. And it, it takes time. It takes time for everything to settle out. So, um, we're just really thrilled. We will be filing with DESI, I believe, uh, tomorrow morning after our vote, once it's solidified, to, um, file our proficient status in all four disciplines. Ms. Vanderklut?
Mayor Burr, uh, well, I'll speak to this for just a moment. Uh, it's a, indeed, a wonderful, uh, to see how well Superintendent Maurice Edward Vincent has done this year, the fact that she got unanimous support, uh, and that we all recognize that this has been a very strong first year for her and she's got such potential, uh, for, uh, growing from where she's at. It's truly been a gr- a great year to, uh, be able to work with her and be able to, for all of us to recognize this tonight. us, to recognize this tonight.
Very good. Is there a motion on the floor?
For approval?
Yes.
We have something we have to do before the end, just with the budget?
No, this is just for her evaluation. This isn't to dismiss.
Christine's very concerned, so that's why I want to make sure.
Stuck with us a little longer.
Right, we haven't approved the budget yet.
Yeah, no, I realize that. Is there a motion on the floor to file with DSC the proficiency status in all four standards for the superintendent of schools? So, motion to approve, Mr. Russo, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut. Roll call vote, please, for our records.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Creutz.
Yes.
Member Mustone, yes. Member Rogiro.
Yes.
Member Russo?
Yes.
Member Vanderklut?
Yes.
Mayor Burke?
Yes, and vote of seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Earlier this evening, we also had a committee of the whole in regards to the school department budget for the school year 1920. It was motioned out for approval of the budget, as stated. We've had many meetings over the course of the last several months. Tonight was the culmination to discuss some of the items that had been presented versus what actually ended up in the final budget. We had three motions, if I can find my paperwork, three motions that were taken earlier in the committee of the whole, that a meeting be taken place with the vocational director Fallon, Mr. Deleva, and the superintendent before school starts regarding physical education for vocational students in regards to the scheduling. Also, that an adaptive SEDD training program, PD, be initiated for physical ed teachers for the start of the school year. And lastly, that a checklist be developed for renters, so for anyone that is supervising a building while renters are in it, to do a walkthrough before the renter comes in and after the renter leaves, to make sure everything is in the same condition, and that a checklist be developed by Mr. McLaughlin of Building and Grounds. Those were the three items that we motioned out to take to the floor. On the motion to adopt the committee report by Ms. Mustone, seconded by Ms. Creutz, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On the budget?
It's not on the agenda.
Excuse me?
To approve?
Motion to approve the budget?
Yes.
As stated in our budget book. There's a motion to approve by Ms. Creutz and seconded by Mr. Rogiro. Roll call vote, please.
Do you have to sever?
You need to go on the record for?
Yes, I need to go on the record that I will not be voting on the paraprofessionals as my daughter-in-law is in that unit.
Does it have to be on the agenda? No, because we have a posting.
There's a motion on the, Ms. Vanderklut, will not be voting on the paraprofessional portion of this budget due to a potential conflict of interest to Mr. Benedetto likewise.
On the substitute.
On the substitute because of a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Creutz.
Yes.
Member Mustone, yes. Member Rogiro.
Yes.
Member Russo.
Yes.
Member Vanderklut.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Patterson, for all of your hard work, your diligence.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Madam Superintendent, on your first budget. Okay, and now, we do have one other item on our agenda. This is not an approved, move these papers around. Negotiations and legal matters. Is there, we do have Mr. Greenspan, who would like to discuss a negotiation item with us?
Executive session.
In executive session. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Russo, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut, to go into executive session to discuss negotiation and legal matters. Roll call vote, please.
Member Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Member Creutz.
Yes.
Member Mustone, yes. Member Rogiro.
Yes.
Member Russo?
Yes.
Member Vanderklut?
Yes.
Mayor Burke?
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. We will now enter executive session. We will open up executive session and leave from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.